Seven oh five six, yeah. And I would like to all rise for the political agents.
President, we do this in the pride of the United States of America. This is the Republic, which stands one nation under God. In this world, the liberty of God is our own.
Okay, so can you help us sort of reply to the audience? Um, does it begin with a person or write in their email? And your comments are limited to five minutes? And who has someone here for public audience? Jill?
Jill, we call twenty six to the right. The Board of Selectmen spent most of the evening on the University Center twenty twenty one, giving a disentendable story for the town manager Marie Capriola's performance evaluation. On the reading of the meeting during the discussion. However, the counties were rolling old comments to review at a late date. Deputy Selectman Sean Askin paid the most insincere and glowing comments about Maria's professionalism passion and her job in public service. The Simsbury tax page paid the salaries and the town employees. And again, Sean Askin said judgment of every right questioning the elected official's capacity to manage the town. Sean Askin, she represents the residents of Simsbury, not the town manager. Sean Askin, given the backstory, the past assistant town plan is firing along with Marie Capriola's unprofessional actions and voted to dismiss the employee. The hot and hard to quote a story about town manager Marie Capriola's abuse of power. Simsbury tax assistant town planner is a former another town in glowing for us. The zoning official had left it roughly is having similar issues at our present employment. The past employee from the library that was terminated by the office is now a whole time employee and no longer has a job in Lady Town District. Two long term professional employees in the town's clerk's office left literally due to lack of interaction and hot support environment with town manager Marie Capriola leading to a low map of low to low morale. The county attorney states that the police commission has authority over the police department. Town manager Marie Capriola has a town authority right and non binding, however I do understand, taking the responsibilities and authority police division. This is an abuse of power. Police Commissioner Mike Long in an email stated and I quote, "As you are well aware, the disagreements between the SPC, Simsbury Police Commission, and the town manager's office have existed almost from the day she was hired and is long overdue," end quote. How would Mike Long evaluate the town manager's performance? Selecting Mike Payne over a paint rubber tree removal has a contract with the town for rubber tree removal and managing the town of Dash inside from the center. In that capacity, Mike Payne has a complete business and should accuse himself from all discussions he votes on town manager Marie Capriola's job performance. Instead, he earned another insincere glowing report of town manager Marie Capriola's performance. All of the board members also gave glowing reports, although they have been made off the record discussions about Marie Capriola's question performance. The Board of Selectmen represent the tax page of Simsbury and have the power to approve or terminate the town manager's contract. Deputy Selectman Matt Sean Askin has presented cheerleader and spoke first in the town manager Marie Capriola, contrary to the role of our elected board select. The residents of Simsbury should have voted remorse for giving Sean Askin another term. The last meeting of the board of select was in the program room of the Simsbury Library where masks were mandate, however, the only masked people in the room were town manager Marie Capriola and deputy town manager Melissa Savin. All of the selected and other candidates committee were unmasked. Since there is no person with a mandate, wearing masks in town buildings should be the people's choice. Although we use telephones with the owls transmitting the audio and video, the transmissions were very poor quality. This mechanism should be eliminated by means. At the last board selection meeting, I asked town manager Marie Capriola to review my allegations of Chief Holter's untruthfulness. In a letter, the state's attorney stated, quote, "As you are aware, proven the veracity upon us, though, of the criminal justices remain cold." According to the police unit representative, David Fazinski, IPO national representative, quote, "It is our stance and very determination here in the soft income from Chief Holter's untruthfulness testimony, which he provided under open penalty, perjury, and cold. I gave other reasons as to my truthfulness on both documents of the police department. Since I have not heard from town manager Marie Capriola, I must assume that certain people can be untruthful with a punitive, while others to dismiss unquestionable charges." I would like to report that Lorenz Millich, the security guard at Simsbury High School and past coach, is presently on paid year straight leave. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury's blog, at Twitter, Yom Co., and Facebook. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Is there any other public audience? Okay, good night. I'm gonna move on to the first election report, which is very short. Because I have to make a speech. Just wanted to make a couple comments to the board on how we're gonna make a couple changes. One of the changes that we made is we moved up the boards and commission reports to the top of them, the agenda item. I'm sure we'll probably don't get much tonight, but just as a way to hear more what's going on, because sometimes we go so long and people just don't participate. And we will, one other thing, like if you're doing that presentations, like we can start defining people on their time limits. I know it's easier said than done, but we should really make sure that people adhere to the time. Another item that we've all been talking about is for people who want to speak, you know, people who want to speak to an agenda item, maybe you could give us a head that when you know that we have some sort of work here, go around the table and then another speed after that. And one very big point of interest is we're doing a hundred year old resident turning a hundred. And everyone, I believe everyone, is invited to a holiday party at the senior center this Thursday. I will be giving her the proclamation at eleven o'clock in the morning. So just thought I would mention that and just to also know that we all are stuck with the Omicron urine right now, so it is what it is. That's my first elections, first report.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all of you on your return. Ordinarily, I don't respond to public comments in my town manager's report, but I do want to, for the record, you know, for Chief Holter, allegations have been repeatedly made about his truthfulness and veracity during public audience. The state attorney's report, letter correspondence that was referenced, dismissed the complaint to answer that was made by Miss Mel for Latin here. That is a document that's fully accessible to the public. I'd be happy to share with you more of them. And we have several arbitration panel decisions regarding the termination and discipline of a former employee, in which the same allegations were made, and the tax position in both of those cases were upheld. Those are also documents that are fully accessible to the public. I'd be also happy to share them with the board. So I just want, for the record, to be known that I have new concerns about Chief Holter's veracity or his truthfulness, and three separate bodies have indicated that there is no matter to that. Thank you. So moving on to my first report part, under coronavirus update. Unfortunately, we have reached rather a status, because it's the first time we have done so since March twentieth of this year. We did take a very significant leap in our per capita rate per hundred thousand people in the data that was released on November twenty seventh. We also had a very significant positivity rate increased of five point four percent. That's actually our highest positivity rate for Simsbury since the recording of the positivity rate began. The good news is that we do have a lot of people who are already tested when they're receiving symptoms. And our health district is very much encouraging folks if you are having symptoms that are similar, I encourage to hold symptoms, COVID symptoms, to please test you, excuse me, and to isolate until a point in time in which you do have the results of your test. The Ferguson Valley Health District is going to be completing our second dose clinic for children ages five to eleven here in Simsbury at the Henry James Memorial School on December eleventh. They are focusing our efforts now on vaccinating young children and providing boosters to individuals that initially received your doses from the health district. And I'm really pleased to report the state is now working on the vaccination data for children ages five to eleven, so I have included that in the report and am not sharing that in our weekly COVID updates. The Ferguson Valley Health District, as a region, has also seen a significant uptick in the case per capita. So there are a hundred fifty three point eight cases per hundred thousand, which does put that in the high risk category as defined by the CDC. I mean, your call when you were doing a bit better in the fall, around the time of the mask order was rescinded, that number wasn't that capital currently is. So we have made, unfortunately, a significant increase in that situation as well. Just a quick note, under board selection business, we have town today's year goal setting question, which will be Saturday morning, December eleventh. We will be able to hold that in person and leave it in the town hall. We will be able to also provide light practice and casual attire as soon as possible. And a few items under department needs to note, I would just like to welcome and congratulate Mika Connors on her promotion. She was a resident employee who was working as a library page and relocated to the area in Florida. And she has a master's degree in teaching, but she is making her career shift and is currently pursuing a degree in library media information technology. And so she, I was recently promoted to the full time library services assistant position. She has a great skill set, really looking forward to what she's lending to the position. And a couple of things from social services. This is such a wonderful surprise, and we're not expecting this, but the Hartford Foundation for Public Safety had awarded us, excuse me, I'm sorry, had awarded First Church the grant for ten thousand dollars, that we were hopeful that that partnership might, you know, come to fruition. And we got the notice that they did award First Church that grant. So our spirit council will be working with that partnership on our repertaining initiatives and a laptop series for that grant reward. And another noteworthy item from social services is we should make our call during the budgeting process. We planned for a second dial ride and replacement and utilize the state grant program. That's typically a twenty percent match, we need the state to fund eighty percent, the town funds twenty percent. We were informed that we were officially awarded that grant. And for some reason, with this grant cycle, they're actually going to fund a hundred percent of the cost. So we'll be, yeah, that's wonderful. So we'll be able to reclaim that twenty percent of the match within the dial ride fund. They're continuing to build those money that will be due to the annual replacement. Those are some really nice new shares, mom. Yeah, thank you.
Is there a report, or is it? Great, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so now that this is up at the top of the agenda, does anybody have any selection things on some committee reports?
Not yet. Just a quick, we're gonna have a public safety meeting by next Thursday?
Yeah.
Eight AM, so before then, if anybody wants to comment there, I believe we'll have an update on the second ambulance service, the ambulance boat ship and pilot in your service in the summer, and we're working with some engaged reference to make sure that we'll be transparent with how that process is working. So we'll put it out there.
Are you guys still needing an exam or are you doing a license exam today?
Uh, this is.
We haven't been more sure.
We have some new exam.
Okay, I didn't watch them yesterday.
I would, my, my husband's doing as well.
Okay, so let's get to selection action. The first item is a meeting and appointment of a deputy for selection. There's no action required by the board. And I'd like to just reference this section of the charter that allowed me to appoint a deputy and the duties of the deputy. And I'm excited to announce that I've asked Amber Abell to serve as deputy. She brings with her years of accounting experience, a JV, and an enormous portfolio of community service to the town. So I'd just like to see if Amber would like to say anything.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that I am grateful and honored for this opportunity to serve as deputy for selection. And I am honored to be able to serve the town of Simsbury and looking forward to working with everybody on board and with Maria's. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you, Amber, for Sean, for her job as deputy. The next item is the board of selection rules and procedures. So Maria, wanna just give a little background on this?
Sure, sure. So at the start, at each new term, the board of select typically adopts some rules and procedures in terms of to tell you to conduct your business during the meeting. The current set of rules and procedures have been in place for some time. There were a few years back, some minor housekeeping changes to reflect the change in the overall program. So we have included what is the most recent version of your rules and procedure, and which we recommend for adoption this evening. But what we'd also recommend is that the personnel subcommittee take a look at the current version just to see if there's an opportunity to improve or refine, improve that set of rules and procedure. And if there are recommendations that come from that process, so you can just come back to the board selection and know that you're taking revised recommendations.
Okay, how does the board feel about referring to the personnel subcommittee?
Are they in favor of that? I could have some thoughts after four years and I can provide those some thoughts and feedback for the personnel subcommittee to consider.
Okay, that sounds great. So then I'd like to move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to refer the board of selection rules and procedures to the personnel subcommittee for review.
Just a point where we have to confirm rules and procedures this evening. We can still, we can still refer them, but we have to have those procedures in place.
Okay, that's not how it happens, so, fine. Okay.
And just a point of that, we do need two quick changes, given the JDI that have already happened. We would need to strike routine of JDI's committee reports from one sixty two dash seven. And then we need to update the date to December third, twenty twenty three, for when they run there, just a procedural this evening.
I thought I asked who about that today. I asked who about that.
Yeah, I should, I think that typically we'll update the date from the document Wednesday that formally adopted. So unless it's formally adopted this evening, we'll update the dates from the document to reflect the return. We'll post it to the website under the board selection page, and I will also add the updated documents to the policy details.
Okay, okay.
Again, committee reports, just to reflect the agenda changes, sorry to be mean.
Okay. So now I'm gonna go back. So move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the attached board of selection rules and procedures.
I'll make that motion when the committee is done.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to refer the board of selection rules and procedures to the personnel subcommittee for review.
Move that.
Second. Okay, well, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So item D is a board of selection regular meeting schedule. Everybody had a chance to look over the meeting. Are we okay with the meeting schedule? Everyone's okay with the meeting schedule? I will move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the board of selection plan to regular meeting schedule as presented.
Is there a question, Wendy?
Sure.
I'm okay with meeting on American's Day, but I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that and it would be possible to be on Wednesday that week if the folks wanted to not spend their conference day with me.
So that's the.
Very good.
Yeah. So I was assuming folks were available this day.
I never get anything special on Valentine's Day.
I'm okay with the fourteenth, but I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the fourteenth. I don't know, it's very good.
Sure.
Okay, we have some, which is.
Right.
Okay, so move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the board of selection twenty twenty two regular meeting schedule as presented.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So there's no action required here. This is just the first election deployment of boards, committees, and commission liaison assignments. They're attached, I gave them a lot of thought, and I hope that everyone's happy with their assignment. And I look forward to you guys serving on these committees and liaisons and reporting back to us as we look forward. Okay, and now we're gonna talk about the stipend for the first election. So I am going to recuse myself and leave the room. And I will turn it over to our new deputy first, so I can take. And then I'll be.
All right, so this item on the agenda is the stipend for the first election. Since twenty seventeen, after adopting the town manager for my government, the town of Simsbury has provided the first election with an annual stipend of ten thousand dollars. This amount is not considered compensation, but rather is an honorarium as well as an offset for expenses incurred in fulfilling the duties of first election. And the ten thousand dollar stipend has been paid annually every year since twenty seventeen. It has been already taken into account in our town budget and is currently reflected in our budget. So if I would like to go ahead and ask for a motion to move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the first election's annual stipend in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
So move. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any gains? The motion has passed effective December twenty, December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the first election's annual stipend in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And I think we can ask one to rejoin the meeting. Don't sound impolite.
So the next word in that business is the reappointment of our town council. We will find out to the council and the council. And Maria, I would like to turn that over to you to shed some light on what this is all about.
Sure, thank you. So with your organizational meeting, one of the duties under the charter is with the board of select to appoint our legal counsel. We have three firms that we primarily work with. One of them is Update Kelly and Stelace, but the general counselor for us is Bobby Casando. He has just been a wonderful asset for our community and our organization. He has not been the best, but lately he's a wonderful man of inspirational knowledge. He's always provided very sound advice to us. He is willing to continue to serve as a general counsel at his current fee. The proposal and biography were included in your packet this evening. Another firm that we use for labor and employment council is Ford Harrison. We've been recommending Karen to now for five years to be our primary labor and employment council. Recently, we've also been utilizing a colleague of his, Ray Manholton, for pension council. We've been very pleased with her work, she's been incredibly responsive. So we would also recommend the reappointment of Ford Harrison as our labor and employment council, but also to improve them for our pension council. It's also very wonderful for streamlining benefits proposals and things of that nature for negotiations. The third firm that we primarily use for council is Bond Council and currently attorney Judith Blake. And she's actually been with us since the nineteen eighties. She's incredibly knowledgeable, a lot of this truthful knowledge, really the best of the best in providing that service. And she is now with Coleman and Comley. So we would also recommend her reappointment for Bond's council. And we have prepared pre-motions to that effect. Should we be supportive of those recommendations for council?
Okay, and is there any discussion across the board on? Bob's been great, I agree with you. And Mike Carrington, I think, is really a good labor attorney for the town. So, excuse my.
Yeah, that word we quoted them, you know, over the last four years. And I did verify, you know, of a lot of them. And the pension council, the bond council, I have not spent as much time with, but I, I have experienced.
And in the fact that the fees really have negatively changed, it's a good thing. So can I recall three of these together? Well, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay. So move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to reappoint the firm of Update Kelly and Stelace, PC, as town attorney for a two term, for a two term through December fourth, twenty twenty three, pursuant to section seven oh six of the town charter for town manager Maria Capriola to execute the engagement letter. Move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to reappoint the firm of Ford Harrison, LLP, as labor and employment council and as pension council for the town of Simsbury for a two year term through December fourth, twenty twenty three. And to move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to reappoint the firm of Coleman and Comley, LLP, as bond counsel for the town of Simsbury for a two year term through December fourth, twenty twenty three.
Move that. Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just that I agree, I think Bob did, in particular, I think did a outstanding job working with the TPL on town staff to help get us over the finish line that way. I think institutional knowledge is critical helping us with, you know, time sensitive submissions such as that. And then Mike Carrington, I, I, I'm sure there's not been better in the field than Mike, especially with the results at arbitration, we've had some proof in these cases. His counsel has been very much appreciative of me and kind others in terms of navigating this process, so I agree.
Thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that counts, so thanks for your background on Eric Sean, your experience. Okay. I won't say the name of the town, but I'll just. Okay. Item, yeah. I think the stipend, is that a?
Right.
Yeah, no, yeah, were they out of order from the list, I mean?
I might have been online.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine. Reauthorization of our temporary committees. So Maria?
So also under our charter, we have committees, divisions, et cetera, that are created by charter. We have some that are created by ordinance. We have others that are considered temporary committees. The temporary committees, their terms are co-terminist with the board of selection. And it does require the board of selection to re-operate those committees at the start of each term. And for those individuals who are on those committees, they continue to serve until replaced or they resign. So typically, we will get recommendations from various town committees, or in certain cases, for some of these committees, recommendations may come from staff members or the committees themselves, such as spirit council. And we will typically receive those reassignment recommendations in usually the January term, right? At this moment this evening would essentially allow these committees to continue to be in existence.
Okay, great. Okay, so. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a good motion. Okay, so move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to reauthorize the following temporary committees with members' terms being co-terminist with the board of selection. Business Development Committee, Clean Energy Task Force, Community for Care, Hometown Heroes Selection Committee, Juvenile Review Board, Spirit Council, Decontamination Task Force, and New Services Advisory Board.
Move that. Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there are no any gains. Okay, and this one, Amber and Heather, you will become very familiar with. It's a tax refund request, which is in every package. If the board will read the motion. Move effective December sixth, twenty twenty one, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of four thousand one hundred and forty one and eighty one cents and to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
Move that.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Move in the post.
Technically, we can. We will. I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's like, early in my first term, I think Maria got an opinion from Bond that we do have to approve the tax refunds, even though we don't actually, you know, we're formally in the act of receiving the process.
Well, that makes it much easier even for us to do that. Okay, so this item is about the donation from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Okay, so, this item is about the donation from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Um, Maria, is, do you wanna give a little information on this?
Sure, so again, this was another nice surprise. Um, the Hartford Foundation had reached out to us, um, stating that they had some funds available, and that they were going to provide us a $5,000 donation for our food pantry program that the social services department, um, takes care of, which does help our residents, um, experiencing food insecurity. So a very generous contribution from them, again, it was unexpected, so it was a very nice surprise. Um, and just in accordance with our code of ordinances, our hiring numbers, any monetary donation that comes into us, that is $1,500 to one of the values, requires a formal acceptance and approval by the Board of Selectmen. Um, so that is why this is before you this evening.
Okay. Um, so, I'm gonna move effective December 6th, 2021, to accept a grant from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of simple, supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department's food pantry, which assists residents in need.
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Basically.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any, or opposed? Okay, and, and the last item, um, this requires a background, it's the EDA grant from the Performing Arts Center. Um, just to give a little, they are applying for two grants, one of which we, we approved the moving forward at our last meeting. And this is the complication for the second grant. Um, Maria, I'm not sure if you want to add some further commentary?
Sure, sure. I think the background is very similar to your last meeting. Um, there are two grant opportunities that came to our attention that, um, the Performing Arts Center, so we may be eligible for. Um, one is a federal EDA grant, which is the opportunity for you this evening. And the second was the state, um, to challenge grant. Um, the EDA grant is similar in nature in that if it's awarded, um, we could use that towards, um, to raise facility improvements to the Performing Arts Center. Um, like the other grant, uh, grant awards can be up to $10 million. Uh, this particular grant, uh, program only requires a 20% local match. Uh, the other grant program required a 50% local match. Um, the grant process for this particular grant program is a little different. There was sort of a step one, informal exploratory phase. Uh, we met with the EDA staff members, we met that threshold, so they invited us to participate in such. So, um, our rough draft that is completed, uh, has a disbursement background information. From that process, um, if they feel that this is a good candidate for the grant, they will write a formal unit notice for this to be accepted, which is a formal grant. So what I would recommend, so which what we did at our last meeting, is that simply our state permission to submit a progress report and should be invited to submit a grant application that we do so. Uh, because it will not actually be required, and you do expect to start with a learning process. Um, where not recommending is our normal procedure to also essentially proactively accept the grant from what it seems that if we receive one of these grants, or both of these grants, you know, the conversation that's conducted this far to really determine, um, you know, how much in terms of a local match are you willing to, to, you know, check out? I don't know, the performing arts center has expressed willingness to cover like half of whatever local match will be required. Um, through some hundred eighty hours, but again, I think sort of shoring up, uh, what we might not to accept, and, you know, against your tolerance for a local match would be in a form of discussion if we are awarded the grant. And, you know, we could always, um, tread it down, if we received both, we can turn down whichever one, it's more unofficial. We can turn down whichever one is not as unofficial too much.
Yeah.
Um, and but again, I think that these are both sort of, you know, special opportunities that presented themselves to you that are as, um, local funding uh, that's up there right now, um, so maybe, you know, once in a decade or generation opportunity for us to potentially have some access to grant funding that we wouldn't otherwise have had access to.
Thank you, and there's no commitment from us at this point, it's just a lot of move forward, and then as things filter in, right, or there's a competition?
Oh, sure. Sorry, um, during the members. Our charter does have a bit of an unusual requirement, so that the Board of Selectmen is required to authorize the submit a whole grant application. So, many committees staff has discretion, um, because there's no commitment, if you will, to accept the grant, you know, or dollars that they commit. But we do again have a third requirement that does require us to seek permission to submit a grant application.
Okay. Okay, did anybody have anything to add to this? Okay, so I'm going to move effective November 22nd, 2021, to authorize the middle of a project app short form and grant application for the EDA grant for the Performing Arts Center Facility.
Move that.
Second. Ooh. Um, any, no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, opposed? And that's the agenda items. So we move on to the reappointment to the Economic Development Commission. Um, uh, I'm just gonna read the motion. Move effective December 6th, to reappoint Robert Crowther, Brooke Freeman, and Ron Jodis to the Economic Development Commission for three-year terms expiring on October 10th, 2024.
Move that. Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And proposed reappointments and resignation for Technology Task Force. The Board supports the personnel, the committees proposed reappointments. Following motions are in order. To move effective December 6th, 2021, to reappoint Mike Doyle as a regular member of the Technology Task Force. I'm gonna just read the, my names and, okay. Um, to reappoint Evan Marks as a regular member, and Liz Peterson as a regular member, Carol Bender, um, John Jean, and William Rucci, all terms expiring December 4th, 2023.
Move that. Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then to move effective December 6th, 2021, to accept the resignation of Paul Kelly as a regular member of the Technology Task Force.
Move that, all your questions?
Second. All of the favors?
Aye.
And then we have a resignation of Lisa Grant from the Spirit Council.
Move that, all your questions?
Okay, so, I'm gonna read it. Effective December 6th, 2021, to accept resignation of Lisa Grant as a regular member of the Spirit Council, retroactive to December 1st, 2021.
Still move it for your questions?
Okay.
Is there a re, do they have?
No, there's no reason on here. Any? It doesn't say. It's somebody to second now.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, one, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and, oops, this one's interesting. Does Amber have to recuse herself to discuss that?
Never.
Resignation of, no. Resignation of Amber, uh, who opened the Library Board of Trustees, uh, neighbor wrote a very nice letter to move retroactive to December 3rd, 2021, to accept the resignation of Amber Abuel as a member of the Library Board of Trustees.
With our. I'll second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Oh, the minutes, great. I have an issue with, um, oh, does Amber have any comments on that, the minutes, I do.
Sorry. And then? Yeah. Procedure when I had to.
Well, we have, we have a resignation notice, which is before.
We just can't be allowed to, to.
We're sending them to the end of the season.
Yeah. I would, because technically, yeah, we're not allowed to serve at the same time.
Who's not? Does somebody want to present?
I have a motion to maybe, except, uh, uh, resignation of Heather Gates from the Library Board, effective today.
Okay. What are we supposed to do?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I move that we accept the resignation of Heather Gates effective today, December 6th, 2021. I'm gonna hear from the Library Board. All right, thanks.
So, um, all, okay, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and, and then the last thing is the meeting minutes. And if anybody has a correction, I do have a correction. Um, uh, there's a update on page three and four. Um, it does, so when we talk about the retirement subcommittee. Um, I, it doesn't mention that I amended after listening to Mary Turner. I amended the motion to remove the retirement subcommittee from the motion. Um, because I was gonna look further for valuing their work. Um, and so I think the, the second and the motion in the second is correct, but it just doesn't mention that at all. It just talked about, in this term, it's about behalf of the recycling committee, and that it was suggested tabling something in the recycling committee, but I amended the motion.
Yeah, so it should just say your name at the top of page four, after some discussion?
Well, I. No, I, first of all, I changed or amended the motion, which included tourism, um, insurance, and recycling, to exclude recycling.
So are you questioning who made the motion?
No, I'm questioning that it doesn't say that at all in here.
It doesn't matter, all that matters is the motion that was taken, and Jack, you made the motion, and you seconded it at the top of page four, to sunset the authority on insurance.
Well, I would like that in the record, as though there's a historical thing in here that shows that we.
We, we don't put, we don't put abstract statements in the minutes, but.
So we don't say that the motion was amended and did not, because this, this alludes to that the motion passed as it was written and managed in the packet, and it does not.
But it was a made in motion.
Okay, I, I would assume we should say that that happens?
Yeah, is it, is it our means only was actionable to some? But it isn't.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, to me, this doesn't accurately represent what happened at the meeting, because the other parts of that was when Chris made the motion to add recycling, it had also been left out of that motion, and we made the motion to add recycling to that. So, I'm commenting here that the way I read the minutes, they were incorrect as to what happened.
So the motions and the approvals are correct?
The motions and the approvals are correct. So we don't, but it says what the motion did, that's fine, I'm just commenting that they're, it's not accurate.
We, we don't capture the debate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so because the minutes don't show the motion, we're saying it doesn't matter, is basically what we're saying. We're just that we voted on a motion that was how it ended up when we voted, not how it started and changed in the meeting. I was asking.
Hope I can take the look, I'm so sorry, I just can't recall. Did that motion have a second? Was there a formal vote?
Yeah, yeah, we voted on. First we bring the one to recycling from the original motion, we voted on that and seconded it. And then we amended the second motion to add it into that one, and voted on that too. So the voting is correct in here, and, and.
And the motion was to sunset the tourism insurance committee. Well, the fact it says is irrelevant from a motion standpoint, all that matters is not what the personnel person reads, is what one of us actually makes the motion for.
Okay, that's nice.
That would procedurally just, just to speed us up. But we don't, we don't ever have to use the motion to the packet. I can put any motion I want on the table, and anybody can second this, and others will.
Okay, good, thank you. But just for clarification, thank you for your help.
Yep.
Um, so, I believe we are at the end of the meeting, and if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that. Second.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.